Fee gathers back just a small, it's hardly even really a fraction of the large amount of fee that we gather. So it's certainly, I think, going to be a difficult issue. I'm not sure that we're prepared to vote on that tonight, but it merits some consideration. You know, and again, it's hard to look into a crystal ball to see where we're going to be. You know, the hope is that that we start off the year in this hybrid model, we hope that things stay the same, and then our community status stays the same, and that we have success in that area, and that we move from the hybrid model forward into more complete attendance at school as opposed to the other way. But of course, you know, I'm not naive enough to not realize that there's also the possibility that it could go the other way. But I think that, at least for tonight, I don't think we're, I know that I'm not prepared to make a decision on any way. Wait, do you have thoughts, Mr.?
Yeah, my recommendation is to hold and wait. Let's, we still have four weeks before school starts. So I think, you know, we need to have some discussions with our bus vendor, you know, I think as we approach the new school year. And I'm pretty confident that, you know, if things change or we need to address this during the school year, this board will move pretty quickly to do so. So I think, Mr. Roach, collecting that data that you've reflected so far with some scenarios would be a good idea. So you need to make some decisions. We can do so quickly.
And again, I guess what I was kind of mumbling through before is that the bus fee that we put in place, you know, really was designed to help us count seats and to get some commitment from people of whether they were using the bus or not, you know, it's really not a reflection in any way, shape, or form of the cost that the district had taken and that the community takes on having a bus. So it's not really as easy as the prorata share as far as the overall cost of transportation. So that's what makes the discussion.
You know, Mr. Roach, can you just talk real quickly about how many students have, or how many families have registered for the bus this year? I know it's been a pretty big decrease from previous.
Yes. So let me just reset my filters on here because I was preparing for different questions. But we've got, as of right now, and I just finished processing my registrations today, actually. So we have 1,146 students registered for the bus. We're going to have some other students that are registered automatically through their IEP because of their specialized needs for transportation. But we're looking at approximately 1,146 registered bus riders. Of that, 407 have identified as will be paying for the bus fee. And the rest would either be free to ride because of their distance in grades K to seven, or free or reduced lunch. And we normally see approximately 1,500 to 1,700 bus riders in a given year, including the specialized transportation needs riders, which are usually around 90 within the district. So definitely seeing a decrease, you know, somewhere in the 300 to 400 range of registered bus riders. And I do have some information, if the school committee would like to hear it, on the projected revenue that we have at this point, as well as what the projected cost would be for our buses, barring any negotiations, just assuming the same number of buses on the road as last year, if that's helpful.
Yes, please.
Okay. So right now, based off of those projections, we're looking at $74,230 in bus fees coming in. And the projected cost for our buses, assuming the exact same number of buses last year, is $1,633,888. So 1,634,000 approximately. And that's just for our 180 days of busing, or in this case, 170 days of busing.
So there's a, there's a good question on the chat. If we have opted for full remote, can we get our fee refunded?
So I think, I think it's premature to talk about that. I mean, the hope is that we're going to go the opposite direction, not full remote. So I think when we make decisions that affect the school services, then we'll make a decision on the bus.
Right. But I think this is a family that chose full remote.
Oh, okay. I didn't understand the question.
Yeah, sorry. They chose, if I'm, if I read that correctly, they opted for the full remote. She just said yes. They opted for a full remote learning setting for this year, not the hybrid.
Okay. All right. So that's certainly understandable. Mr. Roach, would, when we build bus routes, right, we're trying to factor in who's on, right? And that's part of kind of an upfront cost of doing all this, right? So where are we in the process of locking down routes and determining ridership?
The schools are currently determining the cohorts that the students are going to be placed in, where the expectation is I'm going to be receiving that either the end of this week or the beginning of next week. So I won't even be able to start the bus routes until that point, until I know what students are on A versus B. So unfortunately, I don't have any information on that as of right now. The preliminary look that I had done based off of the number of registered riders that I was seeing about a couple of weeks ago, we were looking to need roughly the same number of buses that we did in years past because of the reduced capacity on those buses. And if I may, on that question that was just posed in the chat, the advice that I have given to parents so far, the ones who have decided and opted to go full remote rather than attending the hybrid model, was that if they were to follow our current policy, which allows parents to cancel their bus registration by the day before school begins, and they're eligible to receive a full refund, if they were to do that, my only recommendation to them is that they need to remember that if they change their mind later on down the road, or if things change and we come back to school, but the capacity on the buses does not go back to the normal capacity, I won't likely have room to add somebody back in later on down the road. So my recommendation is if they have any doubt in their mind, even if they're opting for full remote right now, that they still might need the bus someday at this point in this year, so still keep that registration active. Otherwise, there's no guarantee that I'd have a spot for them if they change their mind.
But long story short, if this family is not coming back this year, they can get their money back.
Correct. If somebody says, the school committee policy currently states, as long as they send me an email by the day before school begins, then they're authorized for a full refund. If it's anything after that, there's no refund unless they've moved out of town. If they move, then we do a prorated refund.
Okay. All right. Well, Mr. Roach, you anticipated my question and my point was that, you know, what concern do we have about building routes and expecting, you know, ridership, and then when it's not there, you know, the ability to supplement it later, which is also, you know, a challenge. So, okay.
Certainly.
Yeah, no. So I, in my view, I think you've addressed it perfectly as well to, you know, again, there's just no guarantee. Once we build the routes with the number of people that commit to doing that, right? Because that's part of the reason we put the busing in place was to be as efficient as we can, right? Now, I think we also have to recognize probably as a committee, right, and as an organization, that this is a, these are strange times, and these are difficult times, and these are challenging times. And so we're certainly going to have to be cognizant of that, moving forward, open-minded, sensitive to that. So, but I think I agree with your approach, Mr. Roach, as laid out so far. So any closing view of that, or any discussion, or?
I have a question. Have you gotten any, Mike, have you gotten any guidance from the department? And seeing that they, they asked us in spring to keep our communications and our contract viable with the bus vendors?
They haven't given any, I'm sorry, it was a little difficult for me to hear. I've got a fan going behind me. But what I understood was, the question is, have we received any guidance from the Department of Ed in relation to working with our bus vendor on costs? Was that what you were referring to?
Yeah. Because they told us in the spring, we needed to pay our vendors, specifically the bus vendors.
Yes.
Not just our, you know, not just our town, but all the towns.
Correct.
Given any guidance for the new school year as far as that goes?
I haven't heard anything yet. We had a transportation Zoom last week that we were hoping was going to touch upon that. Unfortunately, that was not the scope that they were laying out from the state in that one. They were only suggesting working with safe routes to school to provide alternative means of parents getting their kids to school, walking and biking, really. But I'll ask Joanne, if, Mrs. Rabello, have you heard anything else since that meeting last week? No. She says no.
No, and I haven't heard anything from the commissioner on that. I don't think that's been addressed in any of their guidance over the summer. Their, all of their guidance regarding bus transportation has been what we've all received on how many kids per seat, the spacing, the, you know, the process within the protocols. Nothing in light of
Contractually.
Contractually. It's something I can certainly ask at our next meeting, but I'm sure they're just going to kick it down the line for right now.
Probably. But I mean, it would be a good thing to keep in the back of your mind, seeing all the other, you know, numbers rising. I mean, even in Rentham and Melford, the numbers have been rising a little bit. So if they're rising in other towns, you know, it just makes me a little bit nervous and hyper vigilant that, you know, if we go back to fully remote, you know, we don't want to be able to live again.
Right. I do think that we should open some lines of communication with our bus vendor, just to have a preliminary meeting, you know, to keep those lines of communication open. Because, you know, whether it's, you know, we have to go back to full remote, or we're coming back full in person, there needs to be some discussion on that. So I think it would be in our best interest to at least have those lines open.
All right. Well, let's make sure we start doing that. That's some sound advice. And certainly, you know, again, it's one thing when we're stuck at the end of the year, when it was a couple of months, but it'd be another thing for an entire school year, for actual month. So I agree. So I'm going to be sure that we do that over the next couple of weeks.
I can set that up.
Okay. All right. So the purpose of this evening, I think the important question that was asked regarding if people opt out of the hybrid model, and what would happen to bus fees. So if a person, right up to the first day, before the first day of school, indicates they are not interested, they don't need the bus, then they're withdrawn, and they will receive a refund. But then again, there's no guarantee that if that situation changes and they need access to the bus later, we can't necessarily promise that a combination of people to be made. So.
And I can reach out to some of the other towns that have decided to go hybrid and see if they've had discussions for any of those that have bus fees, to see if they've had any discussions on what they're doing for the parent fees that they're paying, if you'd like, in advance of next meeting.
Okay.
So there's another question in the chat, but I, about, around students with IEPs and when they'll find out if they're four day. Can we just hold on that question till we get to the last agenda item, which is a reentry update? And I'll turn it over to Mrs. Lawrence to talk about that.
At that time, right?
Thank you. Thank you for the question.
Okay. All right. So I think we've accomplished that agenda item.
Yes.
Okay. So what do we got next?
So the next one is WeFolk. So WeFolk has, they sent us a letter asking the district to pay for a bus route that goes from DePetro to WeFolk and WeFolk to DePetro. In the last few years, WeFolk has purchased that, or, yeah, purchased that bus through Vendetti, and has charged their, their, their parents a fee, correct, Mr. Roach?
That's correct.
Thank you. So now, I think they have asked if we would pick up that, that bus cost now in travel and take those students from WeFolk to DePetro, and we've been from DePetro back to WeFolk. The central component of that is that the line of demarcation is it's only 1.2 mile difference from the line from DePetro to WeFolk that prevents us from doing that in the past.
Correct. Yes.
All right, Mr. Roach, why don't you lay that out for us a little bit, right? Because it's, it has to do with the, you know, what requirements we have as far as busing and the bus policy that we put in place as far as distances from the school and where you get bused, right?
Absolutely. So, yeah, as Mr. Murano started saying there, what it is, is WeFolk is just a little bit over that demarcation line that separates the DePetro district from the Stalbrook district. Our policy states that we will not bus students from the DePetro district to Stalbrook, or from the Stalbrook district to DePetro, that if they choose to use a daycare, it, we will provide transportation from the daycare as long as it's within that elementary school district of town. So WeFolk is approximately 2/10 of a mile over that line. They're in the Stalbrook district. And in years past, they've contracted with Vendetti, and they've charged a fee per week to those families to cover the cost of that bus run that goes just from WeFolk directly to DePetro, and then in the afternoons back. And what they're asking for now is that we revise our policy to allow for transportation to their daycare facility from We, from DePetro, because the concerns of the number of students that can now be on a bus, and the new state of, you know, COVID, and the impact that that may have on the bus cost from Vendetti to WeFolk, they don't feel that that's something that they're going to be able to afford, and that they will not be a viable option for parents attending WeFolk, for students attending WeFolk and DePetro for the upcoming school year. That is a very short distance over that line. They are only 2/10 of a mile. But I see, the concern I have is that it creates a slippery slope that if we do that for them, we certainly have to do the same thing for Gates to Education, which is the only other commercial daycare in town. That one is located directly at the same intersection as the Memorial School, but they're technically just on the DePetro side of town. But they, in the past, have had students going to Stalbrook. And they would certainly want to have that same capability that we now bus students to Stalbrook. And if we made those concessions for those two businesses, I know that the next question will be, why aren't we making those same concessions for, you know, parent-run daycares out of their house, licensed, you know, legal daycares throughout town? Why can't we do the same thing for them? And that certainly would be a logistical issue, to say the least, to be able to do that. Luckily, those two businesses are very close to that center line. But that certainly wouldn't be the same for all the at-home daycares that operate in town. So that's a concern, as well as, you know, bringing those additional, I believe, I know Kelly Davison is on, on the call. She's, she's the administrator over there at WeFolk. So I'm sure she might, you know, be able to chime in with any questions that you have for WeFolk. But the last estimate that I had from her was she had 20 families returning from last year that would still be at DePetro. And she's, she has questions from other parents looking to contract, but they're holding off until they find out what our decision would be.
All right. And so what is, what is the, what is the impact? You know, we talked about the effect that it has with, you know, making a change in policy could have on, you know, relationships with other places in town and other parties that want students transported elsewhere. But what's the financial impact as well?
So if we were to have to put on a full other bus that we did not have in our budget, another bus would be $73,432 for the year. So that's an enormous amount of cost to now be absorbing there. That is the, you know, full extra bus. If we were to tier it with something else, that's, you know, kind of grasping at straws. We don't know what else we could tier it with. Typically, all of our buses are already three-tier buses. So all the elementary buses are already being used for the middle school and high school runs. So it would very likely end up being a $73,000 purchase for us. And if WeFolk had more than 23 students, that would necessitate another bus. So that would go two more buses at that cost.
All right. Have any other options been explored, Mr. Roach? I know you spent quite a bit of time looking at this.
So options for the parents or options for WeFolk?
You're going to put parents, I would say, yeah.
For the parents. I mean, the other options that parents have is they could either contract with Gates to Education, which is in the DePetro district. However, that's a much smaller facility. I'm sure that they probably would not be able to take all those students from WeFolk. The parents could contract with the YMCA before and after-school program at the school, where they, the parents provide that transportation themselves. And they wouldn't be, that would not affect our busing. Students going to Gates certainly would be added to our bus runs. Or contract with another at-home provider that is located in the DePetro district. I know there's, you know, one or two that I'm aware of in the south end of town. Or the parent would have to not utilize bus transportation at all, and just bring their student to and from school.
What, and what is the capacity of a full-size bus now under the present restrictions?
23 on our full-size buses.
Okay. And what, and so what bus was being used last year, if you know, to transport the kids from?
It was a, it was a 43-passenger bus. So I'll, while I'm talking here, I'll pull up the district, excuse me, the DESI map on what a 43-passenger can now fit. But I, we can certainly speak with Vendetti and see if there is another 71-passenger bus that we might be able to utilize instead of the 43-passenger. That happens to be the same bus that we use for our tri-county run, because that's just a one-run bus for us. So.
Mike, was that if, if the capacity is 23 on a 71-person bus, right, then, you know, it's still, still one bus, right?
That's one bus with their current numbers if they accepted no more students for the DePetro district. That was based off of the 20 returning families that they had from last year.
You mean, we're certainly confronted with the same size restrictions, right, or capacity restrictions, and same concerns that we're going to experience in our transportation costs and in executing an effective transportation plan, right?
Correct.
So, you know, I will say that it's tough. You know, we spend a lot of time, and I mean, how many, countless hours really put together our bus, our bus plan. And we, you know, we knew at the outset that it's not going to, no matter how many different permutations of it there are, that there's going to be people that are just over the line, and there's going to be situations that we just can't, you know, accommodate without accommodating everyone and making it, you know, having more exceptions than rules. You know, we tried to put in place, and this committee worked hard together to put in place a sound plan to make our transportation safe, efficient, and to try to effectuate some cost savings. And now we got to add to that, safe not just on road safety, but safe as far as, you know, capacity on the bus, too. And so we're also confronted with a number of different challenges. I just, I'm concerned that, you know, again, if we open up this door, that, you know, it's exposing us to, you know, seemingly reasonable requests by other parts, right? And private parties, private business entities, that, you know, again, we can't, you know, control all of the costs in the community in those situations. So interested anyone in comments, questions, and those are difficult issues?
I agree. I agree. I think, especially that the Gates group, if they have kids at Stalbrook, we'd be in the same boat. And that same thing with those home daycares, well, what about me? I think we're just opening up a can of worms with this. Much of my heart breaks for those families. I have to think, unfortunately, financially for our district, we're already in such tight constraints as is. And taking on another bus, I think it's just gonna, it's gonna hurt us a little bit.
Yeah, I would agree. And, you know, as we think about how we continue to open up, you know, if we're able to start bringing more students back in, more than the hybrid model, it may require multiple runs of our buses. So that's going to increase our costs on the bus end on top of what we're paying now. So, you know, down the road, it could be a pretty big financial hit for us.
Right. This is certainly a challenge, certainly a challenge. Okay. Is there anything in the chat feature on this issue, Ronald, too? Because this is an actual agenda item, so.
No.
It looks like they've raised their hand.
Somebody raised their hand? Yes, Kelly, Kelly did.
Okay.
Kelly, if you want to unmute yourself?
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Hi. Okay. So I did have one question in regards to it. So if we're not able to take, say, that 20 to 23 children that we were anticipating, and they have to be added into the public school transportation anyway, because say these parents can't find care, they don't want to have to change locations, per se, wouldn't those increase your bus numbers anyway, of the amount of buses you would need to run for DePetro?
So it's certainly possible. So what I think what Kelly's trying to say is, if, okay, okay. So I mean, some of them certainly would.
Hold off, Mike. Okay.
What I was going to defer to you, Mike, is I, my observation from afar would be not necessarily, right? It depends on what routes, where the children live, right, where they get on and where they get off, and what capacity is on those buses. So it certainly is an issue, but it's not a certainty that, you know, filtering in that number of children back into the, the system and different stops would require additional buses. Would you agree, Mr. Roach, or?
Yeah, I would say that it's not necessarily that we're going to have to put on another bus like that. You know, if they're sprinkled throughout town, we might have capacity on some of those buses and be able to work out those routes based off of where they live. If we are at a full capacity, because certainly I'm going to try to have these buses running as efficiently as possible to not have extras on the road. So if, you know, if it's a possibility that, you know, if all of those students that left WeFolk and now needed transportation from their house or from Gates to Education, is, there's certainly a possibility that there could be an additional bus needed as a result of that. But I certainly suspect that some of them, the parents would decide to drive them, being that they're only attending two days per week, or contract with the YMCA program as well, where there's no busing being provided. So I think that it is going to be a mix. And I don't think it's completely likely that we'll have to add another bus, but it's certainly a possibility. But at that point, we're legally bound to do so.
Yeah, I was going to say that if we, you know, even if that were to occur, we would still be operating within our bus policy, whereas we'd be deviating from our bus policy if we made a change.
Right. Sure. That's a good point. Okay. All right. So what, how do we, you mean, this is really?
We don't have to take a vote.
Yeah, I don't think, that's what, yeah.
Right. If you choose not to, you don't have to take a vote.
All right. Okay. All right. So that seems to be the consensus among our committee, if I'm right. Okay. I recognize it's a difficult issue, and we recognize that this is difficult times for parents. And, you know, we really don't want to be, you know, insensitive, frankly, I guess, right? Because we're all dealing with so many different challenges. But again, it's difficult to take them all on. And so we're doing the best we can to accomplish that. So thank you. All right. Well, all right. So having said that, what do we, what do we have next?
Last is our, our remote learning update. So just going to talk a little bit about kind of where we are and how we're proceeding. So we, we have met as an admin team since our last meeting, I believe, three times, to kind of put the final touches on our reentry plan. We are just about done. So again, our reentry plan is comprised of three components or three models: a full remote, a hybrid, or a full in-person. I think it's safe to say at this point, and you, as a school committee voted already, we're not looking at a full remote, I'm sorry, full in-person model right now. The committee has voted for a hybrid model, which we have been focusing a lot of our energy on, and the remote component also, because we do have some families that are looking for full remote. So we've been working as an admin team. A survey went out last week from our building principals to ask parents specifically. Now, I sent the survey out about a month ago, just to gain, get some basic data on who would need, who was interested in hybrid, or full in-person, or full, full remote. And it was overwhelming by parents, around 80, a little over 80% would be interested in the, in the hybrid model. That's where we're going forward. So the principals are gathering that information from families now specifically, who wants hybrid, who, who wants full remote. From there, we'll be dividing into those cohorts. The principals and the central office team will be creating those cohorts to move forward with. And we'll be working with our, our teachers union to kind of prepare the scenarios, right? Like who's going to be the remote teacher, who's going to help support the hybrid model. So we still have some work to do in regards to, to that. But we need that data first. Also, I wanted to be upfront and frank that we've done a lot of work in preparing our schools for the start of the next school year. We have purchased an abundant amount of PPE. Every classroom has hand sanitizer. Our custodians are prepared to get in there and do the work that needs to happen. They're, we're setting up schedules for them to make sure that they're cleaning those high-touch areas during the school day. We're going to be moving some custodial shifts to make sure there's plenty of coverage throughout the day. Wednesday is our full remote day. That's when a deep clean will happen for every building. We've purchased and installed from Mr. Oakley, hand washing stations at the high school and the Memorial School. We have, scroll down, is there, there's one question. Is there a deadline for parents to make a final decision about remote or hybrid? I believe that the deadline was yesterday. But you can certainly check with the principals, if the survey is still open, can they still go in and input that data? I'm seeing a nodding yes. So yes, you can still access the survey and put that in. We would like to have that information in, in the next couple of days, if we could. So we can start developing those cohorts. BMS is still open. Thank you, Mr. Cutler. So we're moving forward. This Friday, I have to submit our plan, by this Friday, I have to submit our finalized plan to the Department of Ed for approval. Uh, this Friday, I have to submit our plan, by this Friday, I have to submit our finalized plan to the Department of Ed for, for approval. I will tell you that our plan is not different than any other plan that's out there with our district that's doing hybrid. The model I'm seeing pretty consistent is a two-one-two model, which we're doing, with the cohorts and, and the same process for deep cleaning. Today, the governor talked about, uh, towns and, uh, assigned color codes to them in regards to the number of cases or areas of concern, uh, through different area, in different towns. So Bellingham was distinguished by a white, with a white color. That means that Bellingham has had less than five active cases per 100,000 people in the last 14 days. So that gave us the, the top level of, you know, safe, safer, safe to come back, uh, technically in full person or hybrid. I checked with our town nurse today, so in Bellingham, there's currently three actual active cases. Uh, there's 14 cases that people have tested for the, tested, done the antibody test, um, and it's come back positive. But that doesn't necessarily mean that they have COVID. From what she told me, the, the antibody test is correct about forty percent of the time. So there's a lot of false information that they're getting from that, but the, our town nurse is working really hard with those folks to make sure they have no symptoms. They're self-quarantining just to be sure. So technically, in our, in our town, there's three active cases. And, you know, I, I think it's, for us, we can come back in this hybrid model. I've said this, uh, many times, we, we still have to continue to watch the metrics and continue to be vigilant on where the town lands in the next few weeks as we move towards opening. And also, once we do open, um, we do have, uh, thanks to our lead nurse, I see her, she's right in the middle of my screen, this is Loftus, and all the nurses too, they've created protocols and procedures for if there's a student who's sick, or if there's a teacher who isn't feeling well, uh, and sick. If someone tests positive. So we have all those components ready to go, um, that we can act on quickly and efficiently if there's, if there's any issues. So again, moving forward. Also, we're, we, uh, were awarded a grant from the Department of Ed for technology. So we're, we're purchasing additional Chromebooks and Chrome pads for our elementary students, so we'll have plenty of devices. Once we, well, hopefully they'll be in before we start, no guarantee, um, but we're, we're hoping that they will be. So we'll have plenty of devices K through 12. And also students and families who need to borrow devices will have them for them, and they'll be able to use them in class in the hybrid model, so very excited about that. So the work that needs to happen now going forward is creating those cohorts, working with our staff and developing those hybrid plans. When you have a group of students in two days and a group of students out, uh, working around what the full remote day will look like and, uh, talking about how do we support our students that are in the full remote model? So those are, those are things that we're gonna work on the next couple of weeks, and then with our staff when we get back in September. Does that make sense?
It, it does, it does, but I, I know that, um, I know there's so much that goes into this. I, you know, I so admire the work that you, uh, have put in and that your team has put in, but I, but I know that people are information starved still, right?
Yes.
And, and, and the, uh, and people are afraid, right? And so, uh, it's, it's so, when do you anticipate us being, we'll have a discussion about, okay, this is what the day in the life of a student is gonna, is gonna look like, okay? And this is what the day in the life of a, of a teacher is gonna, is gonna look like. And I know, because I'm part of it, that, you know, we'll be having discussions later this week, which we look forward to an earnest, uh, with our partners at the, Bellingham Teacher Association, to work through their concerns, uh, and try to, uh, address them and put some plans in place. But, but again, we, we, uh, you know, I find myself chopping at the bit, and then, but I know that it's, there's so much work to be done to get us there, but do you have some sense of when that might be?
Yeah, so I want, so everyone needs to take a collective breath, right?
Right?
Like, so we're, we're getting a lot of emails from staff and from parents, and, and I totally understand that, right? We, we need to take a collective breath together and, and work cooperatively through this process. It is a tremendous amount of work, we're redesigning school as we go. But in saying that, I feel really confident and comfortable with our administrative team and our teachers to make it work, right? So, uh, tomorrow, we do have a meeting with the, uh, the BTA to talk about, some, a memorandum of agreement around some of the concerns and, and issues that, you know, we're gonna see and, and things that, that are gonna change within the schedules. Um, so we're gonna start that discussion tomorrow. We're also, uh, as an administrative team, this Friday, uh, we have another team meeting. We're gonna walk through a couple of scenarios, we're gonna test live streaming a class, you know, between the administrative group and see how that works within, within our district or within our schools. We're going to, you know, set up some classrooms and kind of sit in there and see what it looks like to be six feet apart. Um, so we'll, we'll do some of that work on Friday. This Thursday, my hope, I'm crossing my fingers, I'll be sending out the entire reentry plan to families and to staff. So you can see everything that we've put in there, from, uh, the PPE to the, the test, the, um, cleaning protocols to the, uh, everything. All of it, uh, full transparency, wanna get that all out there for everybody to review. It's taken us a while because there's a lot there, it's about a 70-page document right now, it's not, it's not brief. And you know me, I like to be, I like to be, I like brevity. But it, it's, it's quite overwhelming, but we have to be patient and calm through this process, we will get through it. I hold confidence and trust that we will do the best we can and, and things will be in good shape. So we just have to just walk slowly through it.
I think that comment that you just made, walking slowly through it, I wasn't, there is repeating one more time because it's very fluid. And being a parent, I think I'm not any, any different than any parent out there, I want my child to be prepared. But we're gonna, we're gonna take it day by day, there's gonna be no child left behind, this, in the whole scheme of things, we're gonna, we're gonna move forward together. We're gonna grow together, we're gonna get better together, and we're gonna keep evolving together. No one's going to be, you don't have what you need, now you're out of it.
Right.
We're, we're gonna keep evolving and getting better, slowly, it has to be slowly.
So every, you know, every week I'm on a commissioner call and, and we get different information sometimes. It's never, it's never consistent, so I learned pretty quickly that I can't get too excited about what we get, I have to, we have to take it slow. Um, and, and really, you know, analyze the data we have, continue to monitor our metrics and continue to build our plan, but take that information in and, and work through it and, and develop it. Take anything that's changed and make some changes to our plan. So, you know, we've done a really good job. I, you know, I wanna give kudos again to the reentry committee that had about six, 160 people involved, that we got, we heard voices from parents, staff, uh, some students that participated. They were, it was amazing to get all that, that feedback. So, um, you know, we're, we're where we are right now in a really good spot because of all that feedback, because of all the work that we've done. We still have a lot to do. But again, I, I'm confident that we'll get it done. At, at a slow pace, being mindful of everything we need to do in the process. I don't wanna rush through it and then make a mistake. We, we need to take our time.
Ju- just as I, you know, kind of pointed out, that in some capacities, we feel kind of information starved and, you know, can't wait to hear more, right? You know, you need information too, right? I mean, so we, you know, we need to narrow it down if it's coming back and it's not, right? Who's going to full remote, who's gonna, just being hybrid? But it's kind of a two-way street, so I look forward to, you know, the, the full release of the plan.
Yes.
So that people can make an informed decision, can ask informed questions, okay? If they have any remaining from that, right?
Yep.
Um, so that they can make a final decision. So then you can finalize and your team can finalize what needs to be, uh, addressed as far as the cohorts and what a day is gonna look like, so.
Correct.
Okay. So this is truly a situation where we all gotta work together.
Yeah.
All right, so we gotta give a little, uh, give folks a little more information, they can look forward to that, you, we're thinking maybe, maybe Thursday.
Thursday, we, I wanna get the plan out to everyone.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the goal.
So when you say everyone, who?
Parent, all parents and staffs.
Okay, and so, and how are we gonna do that?
I'll, I'll be sending it out in the mass emails.
Okay.
Uh, BC5.
And are we also following up with, with families to let them know that, you know, the, the importance related in digesting it, having their questions resolved? And ultimately, we can hear from them, so that we can plan accordingly on the number of kids who are.
What I'd like to do, uh, so we have our meeting tomorrow night with the BTA and send out the plan on Thursday. I'd like to set up a, a Zoom meeting with our faculty and our staff next week, okay, sometime next week to, to kind of gain some info. Uh, give them opportunity to ask some questions and get some feedback. And then I would do the same with families, um, probably at the end of next week. That's my, that's my goal right now, barring any changes.
Right, okay. All right, and, yeah.
Two follow-up questions, because they both kind of came up in the chat, and I had the same questions. There was somebody that asked, um, how are parents to make an official decision before the full plan is released? So once they see the plan, then are they able to make this decision, even though they already might have filled out the survey?
Sure, they, so they have some time to, to still fill out the survey. Our principals are gonna be, uh, calling some families just to get some more info. But the, so the, the plan is, the committee has already voted, it's hybrid, right? So we're in a two-one-two model, uh, two days, uh, students are in, two days students are out, and one day is full remote. So that really doesn't deviate from, the, the plan doesn't change, but the document that I send out isn't gonna change that. The schedule that we're, and hoping to, to build out from there is in the plan, it's a sample that they can see. And what are, my hope is, as we, as we continue to develop this, and this is Rafferty, if you wanna chime in, you can, is that we wanna make sure we build in as much synchronous learning as we can. Uh, and what synchronous learning is that live connection through, um, Google, uh, Google Meet. We wanna try to build as much as we can, whether it's through the remote, everyone's remote, or through the hybrid model. So we, those are things we still have to continue to work on. Do, do you wanna say if that's something, Mrs. Rafferty?
No, I was just.
You're chopping at the bit.
I was, um, monitoring the chat as well, and I know there, there were a lot of questions in there about once families review the plan, they may want to change their mind, they might have chosen to be remote, but once they've reviewed the plan and they get a better sense of what things are gonna look like, do they have the opportunity to change their mind and come back, um, hybrid or vice versa, so, um, but that was already brought up.
So, uh, you have some, now, what you review the plan to change your mind, let your principal know. Once we start the school year, if you wanna go from, um, hybrid to full remote, that's something that we can do. If you wanna go from there, remote to hybrid, we, we'll have to talk about that, it might be a little bit more difficult, we might have to, uh, have more discussion about that, cause we're building out our classrooms now based on the data we have, so it could be a little bit more difficult. So from hybrid to remote, certainly doable, but remote to hybrid will take a little bit more discussion.
Maybe, maybe, just. Right, we'll be too, Mr. Marana, without, you know, I'm not trying to be down to every little detail, but you know, some of the discussions we've had about, okay, what is a classroom gonna look like at half-capacity? And, you know, how far are we able to keep the, you know, the average size of the classroom versus the number of students that are in there? Then, you know, we're fortunate, I think, and I'll ask you to elaborate on this, that, you know, my perception is that we have the resources and the physical space that, 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 we are, we're maybe six feet away from each other, right?
Correct, so.
And you give the teachers some space too, right?
Right, so one thing that I mentioned when we first started this, uh, reentry plan is that the safety of our stu- students and staff is important. When we got the initial guidance on reentry and it focused on, you know, six feet distancing, six feet distancing is required, but, um, three feet. That, that didn't, I, I didn't like that. So we stuck with the six feet. And every, so every classroom, kids are six feet apart from each other. And so if, you know, imagine a class of, say, 22 kids, uh, 11 would be in a classroom during that hybrid time. Again, not knowing though, um, how many kids are gonna be full remote, we would subtract them from the total. So they may be smaller than 11.
What, what about, I, you know, I'm sure, you know, maybe you don't have complete thought through, answer to these, but what about discussions about transition of kids and moving in the hallway and getting them off the bus and into the classroom and still maintaining, you know, appropriate distancing from each other?
Yep, so the, the principals have worked out, uh, we call it logistical, logistical document that they have for their building specifically. And it, it talks about start and end times, uh, those are gonna be staggered, so parents will have a different drop-off time than, um, the buses. So we don't all get jammed up at one time. Passing times specifically at the high school, how that will look, we're not gonna have, so if we have 300.
By passing time, you mean?
Between classes, correct. So what we're looking at, at the high school is a, is a block schedule, uh, where it's, it's a, we call it four by four. Uh, so the kids would have four periods a day, so they would only have to change classes four times. And that's, that's potential. And we would stagger those change times so that, again, not all students are in the hallway at the same time, we stagger that. Lunches, we're gonna build in an additional lunch at high school, this is their high school elementaries, correct?
Correct, middle school already had four lunches. So we are increasing to have a lunch per grade at both elementaries and then four lunches at, uh, BHS as well.
Thank you, so that'll help us keep the, it's for lunch down, I'm, be able to utilize our cafeterias.
Of course, yes.
I don't need to.
No, no.
Uh, what about the high-needs students? There's a lot of talk about that, and that was brought up in the chat too.
Yes, so I'll, I'll have Mrs. Lawrence pop back on so she can talk a little bit about the high-needs students and how they'll come on, what days they'll be in the building.
Correct. Currently, we're looking at the DESI guidance and certainly utilizing that in making those determinations. Right now, the, uh, plan will indicate that students with very complex special needs who receive 75% or more of their instruction outside of the general education setting will be coming in for the four-day of in-person learning with only the one day of remote to ensure that their classrooms get the deep cleaning just as well as the rest of the building. Uh, there is a plan, we're working very closely with all of the principals as they begin to develop their cohorts of, um, students coming in for cohort A or cohort B. And we're looking at the students' IEPs and their services and determining how best then to phase in the children who will receive special education services that are not 75 or less than 75% of their time outside of Gen Ed. We're also, uh, prioritizing students with some, uh, duly diagnoses, children that may have some disabilities along with being an English language learner, or maybe having some difficulty with housing or in foster care group homes, those kind of settings. Those children will be scheduled to come in four days per week when, when we open on the 15th, with the plan to start phasing more students back in as we move forward, uh, over the first few weeks of school.
Anybody else have any questions?
So if I can just maybe address a couple of the questions on the chat real quick, and this is Rafferty, I'd already tackled a couple. So, you know, can, uh, can families move in and out of hybrid to remote? Those are discussions we can have with you or your building principal, um, as we go forward. So I saw one qua- comment, if cases go up, um, you know, can we go to full, go to remote as a family? So if cases go up, and again, from what the governor laid out today, and our color changes from white to, I believe it's yellow, then you have to start looking at, maybe we need to go to full remote. So that's where we have to keep an eye on the metrics, uh, for our, for our community every, every week, every day. The governor will be putting out that map, uh, with the color codes every week, so I'll keep an eye on that. We'll all keep an eye to make sure that, you know, we're still staying in that white, uh, level.
Mr. Marana, there was one question about, um, school committee notes from the meeting. I know Mrs. Robidoux takes excellent, um, minutes of the meetings, and what's the turnaround time for those notes to be posted to the, to the website?
Uh, once the committee approves them, they get up pretty much the next day. So we can double-check to make sure that those are getting up. And maybe we can, they'll talk to Mr. Garofano, can we link them to our COVID file? If that is helpful for families to go back and look at their school committee notes.
There's another question about Title I services, and I'm happy to answer that one. Um, so yes, um, Title I services, um, at both of the elementary schools will still be in place. We still have both of our Title I programs, the tutors are still, um, employed and will be ready to hit the ground running. So whether we're in a hybrid, um, when students are in person, we have protocols in place for the tutors to be able to work in person. And then when students are working remotely, um, we've, um, already planned for those protocols. And those are also, um, it's part of the plan. So when the plan gets released, there's a section about how we'll accommodate Title I services, um, in both of the models and as well as the L services. So we are required and are planning for, um, implementing all of those services that the students need, it's part of the plan. So you'd be able to read those sections when it comes out, um, in the next couple of days.
Uh, David, I saw that you signed up and you had a question. Do you wanna ask it, or do you wanna put it in the, either way is fine.
But there's a lot of people on there.
There's a lot of people on there, it'd be easier to go through the chat if possible.
Do you want to just put your question in the chat, David, and I can answer for it? Are you on a phone?
I think you did.
Okay, we'll see if you can get that phone.
I think his question came up in the chat.
It did, okay.
I mean, that's the key that you, you and we have talked about, you know, as we go down this path, is the ability, our flexibility to be in touch with the present information available and make the best decisions possible and to be ready to adjust if necessary. And that's, you know, state's requirement, and we're doing it. We're putting together, you know, three possible plans, right?
Yep.
So, so that we'll be prepared to make adjustments if necessary. So, hopefully, hopefully the adjustments are positive, but we can't be naive and assume that it's going to be that way, so.
So, again, David's question, you want to know if the, if the surveys are binding contracts? So, again, we can talk to your principal, there's, there is some flexibility that we can provide. You know, if you're full remote, you want to come into the hybrid model, we may not be able to accommodate you right away. It may take a few days for us to make that happen. But we just, again, talk to your principal and we can, we can discuss it and see what we can do. Or if you're in hybrid and want to go to remote, that's a little bit easier. We can make that, that switch a little bit simpler. Good question, if parents travel to another country or restricted state, will the student need to stay out of school for 14 days or until negative test? I would reach out to your building nurse to get clarification of Mrs. Loftus to help on that one. It might, I believe, is that in our plan, Mrs. Loftus? Is it addressed in there? I think she's frozen. I'll find out on that one for you.
Mr. Morano, if I may, I think that's part of the governor's travel plan right now anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I've recently read it, I can't remember it word by word, but it seemed pretty, it was pretty stringent, so it surprised me that if it didn't include a household that were traveling abroad.
Right. Not sure who's-
True.
Question, will kids eat in the cafeteria? How will buying lunch be? So, kids will be eating in the cafeteria. Mrs. Bell's been working on that currently. Do you want to talk a little bit about that, Mrs. Bell?
Sure, hi. So, again, this is in the plan that we've been putting together as an administrative team, but our goal is with the additional lunches, and of course, with the hybrid method, we'll have half the student body in the cafeteria. And just for the secondary piece, that we will have an overflow space. So, those lunches that would be larger are going to be cut in half as well. So, we're looking at bringing the students in by classroom, you know, with a time lapse in between each class to make sure each student has time to, whether they're bringing, immediately be seated, or if they're purchasing, go through the line with the six-foot social distancing all the way through. And we will be limiting our menu options on the secondary level. Elementary will stay the same. And trying to think if there's anything else. We will not be using our pen pads for the students to touch. Instead, we are working with Mr. Roach on making student IDs so that they can scan their ID number. And our team also has each student to look up easily as well. So, I think it's really going to be a simplified method, but a safe method as well. Our team will have face shields, masks, gloves, and every item that is purchased will be prepackaged. No more open trays, so there'll be sealed containers, individually wrapped utensils and PC condiments. So, everything will be safely handed to the students in that method as well.
We also have some things in the buildings too, like it's common to see in restaurants and things now, and even you see in this building, you know, markers on the floor, tape and-
Yes.
Help the students remember how to stay away from each other and to give the teacher distance and-
Yeah, so we're doing that. We're putting down tape on the floors and in certain areas to make sure that kids stay in the appropriate size, that they have the six-feet distancing. Cafeteria will have, I'll just talk about that, they'll have spaces that are six feet apart. So, those are things that we're doing. They'll be washing their hands before they go to lunch. They'll be washing their hands when they come back from lunch. Every time there's a mask break, they'll be washing hands or using hand sanitizer. When they enter that school, they'll be washing and hand sanitizer. So, we're putting all those pieces together.
Okay, all right. You say we have hand sanitizer for each classroom. Do we have a little jar like I got it on?
No, no, no. No, no, mounted on the wall.
Right, so it's going to be stocked regularly as part of the resources of that classroom?
Yes, Mr. Roach bought gallons of it.
Excellent. Okay, all right. Does anybody from the committee have any additional questions or things that they want to raise on that issue?
I'd like to make a comment.
You're doing a much better job than what I'm dealing with right now. I know nothing and we have no plans of anything anytime soon. So, kudos, as much as this is awful for parents and families, please know that Bella Kim is much further along than other districts.
We're trying.
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment that all of these efforts that the school department is putting in, you know, is designed so that we can provide a quality education for the student. Now, that is our goal. So, the hybrid model, you know, we wouldn't be going through all this trouble if we didn't feel that it was in the best interest of students from a learning standpoint. And that is our driver, quite frankly, for everything that we do, is to provide the best education for the students. So, in the in-person learning portion of this is, is a critical piece for students to learn. So, you know, we're making every effort that we can so that we can provide that. And I think that the families, you know, although I'm sure some folks are nervous, you know, that that is our, our goal is to provide the students with the best education possible and the safest manner.
All right, Mr. Morano, are you able to discern anything else in kind of blog chunks of, from the chat? Any core questions that we really want to take advantage of or address? I know, I don't want to make a squall through, I mean, I know Mrs. Rafferty often is, tries to be as well, so. Mrs. Rafferty, we, did we cover?
Yep, I was just responding to one of them. Looking through, the only other thing, there were a couple of nursing questions back a little bit earlier that we hadn't discussed. There was one regarding whether or not we saw the need to hire any additional nurses. And then, there was some more information about the protocols that are in place if there's exposure within classrooms or throughout the school day. And I just want to add on that, when the plan is released, you'll be able to see all of the different protocols for how families will be notified, and we're working on all of those procedures now, so that's in there. And then, just looking through. And then, Mr. Morano, Mr. Woodman was asking if he could continue to ask another question.
Yeah, he just sent me a-
Okay, perfect.
How do we find out if there are cases in our classes? So, we're going to work with our nurses and families need to make sure that they keep, first of all, most important, if someone is sick, whether it's a staff member or a student, stay home, right? Stay home, let us know, and just stay home, don't come in. That's the, that's the main part right there. If a student is tested or a staff member has, is positive, we have those protocols and procedures in place that will notify parents, will do, you know, possibly close the school down. I think that's one of the options that we have to do a deep clean, make sure that everyone is up to date with any information that we receive. But it is critically important that if anyone is not feeling well, that they should and must stay home and just let the school know, and then we will go from there. I saw another question that if someone travels and then they're, keep their kids home and they're remote, will that be held against them? No, that won't be held against anybody. If you're in, if you're homesick, we're not going to hold that against you. We'll, that will get you to access even the remote component. We'll figure out how to make this work for everybody. But again, I can't stress enough, anybody sick, fever of Mrs. Loftus, I know you're in and out. But you're still frozen. If a student has a fever, and it's in our plan, you can read it in there, then they should stay home, they must stay home. It's not 100.4, if a student has a fever, 100.4, they stay home. If, if, I don't care if it's 99, call the school, let us know, and the nurse can help, help you on that end. But that's the most important part. And again, if someone tests positive, we'll make sure we get that information out to all school employees and to all parents so that they're aware that there's a concern. I hope that, I hope that helps.
By creating the cohorts too, the kids are, so if a child is sick, right, it's, you know, that's a particular cohort that's affected, right? You know, obviously, community effect, everybody's affected a different way, but more directly affected. And then, also, the kind of framework, as I understand it too, is to, you know, keep the kids together with their class, right? So, then, you know, again, I don't mean to be, I don't want this to sound callous too, but it's limiting the amount that kids mix with each other outside of their own classroom. Would that be a fair description or?
Yes, yeah. Yeah, but I, I think, you know, and I lean on our lead nurse an awful lot. She's got big shoulders, so she can take it. But, you know, with that protocol, those procedures, you know, I really trust that, you know, we're going to, and that, a lot of that has been given us by the state too, so we're going to follow those, those pieces of, you know, whether we need to close the school or we need to just close a classroom. You know, I'll probably err on the side of caution to be honest, you know, and be careful, so.
All right, and the, and the teachers are reporting much earlier than the students, right? As we discussed earlier, we're going through the calendar, right?
Yes.
All right, so that gives, you know, during that extra timeframe is intentionally built in to help train and educate and try to get a sense of how we, how they can manage their day safely for themselves and the students too.
We're also working on putting in some temperature, temperature monitoring, as kids come into the building and staff. So, that'll, that'll be helpful in kind of flagging if someone has a temperature and then the nurse can pull to the side and do a better check, but that's something we're looking at, okay?
We also, in our work, we have the oxygen levels. We have to do temperature and the oxygen level every morning.
I want you to discuss that too. We mentioned that a little before too about the filtration in the building and some of the adjustments that have been made.
Oh, for the HVAC?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. So, we're working with our contractor. In fact, historically, we said we'll have some additional information tomorrow. So, we asked them to do a full kind of survey of our HBA systems, make sure all the filters are changed, but also making sure that the air is exchanged as often as possible. I forgot, it's supposed to be changed every 30 minutes typically, buildings, like schools. Usually like four, yeah, four air changes per hour is like a typical, four air changes per hour. So, we asked, asking them if they can increase that, so there's constant air filtration, outside air coming in to make sure it's fresh. And we're also asking teachers, keep your windows open, you know, that again, helps with the air exchange. But they are working with us to make sure that we can get those things implemented.
There is a lot to it, there is a lot to it.
There's a few things we got to do.
A couple of different areas to address, okay? All right, all right, so I guess we'll go one more time. Anybody from the committee have any question or concern or comment?
Thank you.
Yeah, I think that's- Can I just address a couple more of these questions real quick?
No, absolutely, I wasn't trying to end it, just that you have a better view of it than I'm not tracking.
Sure.
It looks like Mrs. Lawrence is physically raising her hand and not using the technology, Mrs. Lawrence, so.
It's my weak area.
Mrs. Lawrence, you still have a question on that?
Yeah, that's why I wanted to just acknowledge that. I just want to make sure that parents understand that the provisions on a student's IEP are going to be delivered. They will be delivered when the students are in the buildings and they'll be delivered when the students are in their remote sessions during the hybrid program. You will be getting specific detailed information in a plan that will be going home, hopefully, at the very end of August or by the very first of September detailing exactly when these services will be delivered to your child in the remote sessions. And in terms of a timeline of when we hope to be able to phase all of the children with IEPs or disabilities back into the building, I don't have a specific date to give you right now. It's all going to be contingent on the development of these cohorts and how our members in terms of the ratios of, you know, positive testing in the, in the community and all of that plays out. But our goal is, is to make sure that we have a plan in place to phase children back into the building so that they are in session for as long as we can get them in front of their teachers. And whether that be over a two, three-week period or a month, it's all kind of fluid based upon what happens with the virus and as the principals continue to work through their cohort development. But the IEPs will be implemented as, as they are constructed and as the children certainly are entitled to receive their services.
So, I did see a few questions in here around, why did we send the survey out so quickly without the plan being complete? So, it's kind of like building a plane as we fly it, right? And we needed to start getting some information on how many kids might be hybrid, how many might be remote, and continue to develop our plan. If we waited too long, we wouldn't have enough time to do both, to fully develop the plan and start creating those cohorts and, you know, working with our staff. So, we needed to start gathering data quickly. It's not ideal, I'll put that out right now, it's not ideal, but we don't have a huge window of time to make all this work. So, we're doing the best we can. I think we're, this is Jake's, but we're in better shape than most, and we're getting a lot of, a lot of work done. Why not delay the start? Start of school is delayed, they're not starting till the 15th, so we have those additional 10 days to get that work done. I can't physically delay the start any more than that. It's not, it's not, it wouldn't be approved by the Department of Education, so we still have to fit in those 170 days. Those are required by law.
All right, you let me know, Mr. Morano, if you're going to another one or if you're waiting for me or-
Is it going to be a full day of school or shortened day? It's going to be a full day of school. All right, I think, I think we're good. Again, if people have additional questions, reach out, reach out to your principal, reach out to me, Mrs. Rafferty, Mrs. Lawrence. You know, some questions around the four days for high-need students. I know that you'd be happy to answer any of those. The plan will be out on Thursday. Send that out to everybody, take some time to review it, ask some questions if you need to, and look for, look for another Zoom invite staff early next week. Parents maybe, hopefully, end of next week, if not the week after.
Great, all right. Last chance, committee members. Okay, all right, Mr. Morano, thank you. Thank you to the administrative team. We know that this is an incredible amount of work and truly unprecedented issues that are trying to be addressed in a very short amount of time. And I think something you said to me, something you said to us early kind of resonated too, is that, you know, we're in this position because you and your team and the district was able to react so quickly and effectively in the spring and build off of that experience, right? And then, use that to be prepared for what's come down the road. And so, we are in a better position than many places, which is what gave me the confidence personally as a committee member to support the hybrid plan and to vote with that. I feel even better about it tonight, getting more and more information, okay? And that's, I think that today was a great discussion, I think we covered a lot of, you know, some of the things seem like a little minutia, but they're important, you know, they're really important to, to make a decision of whether to enter into the school, right? And so, I think today was a great step forward before to even more information. But again, the thing you said too is, you know, the plan is kind of out there in a big, in a big way, okay? It's, the hybrid model's there, you know, we have great confidence in you and your team and our faculty to deliver that plan and to execute it safely to the best of our ability for the kids, right? And that's, that's what we're going to make happen. So, I think we covered a lot of areas tonight to fill in some, some details about how that's going to happen safely, right? And what the day will look like for the kids. And, you know, there's a little bit more information left, but people are going to need to make the decision sooner than later so that we can plan accordingly and make it a great, it's great, good experience as it can be and safe for the kids. And I guess that one reminder too is that it's tougher to add than it is to go remote, right? It's tougher to come back in the building than it's not because we're building the class size now to harness the resource and make it as safe as possible, provide effective distances.
It's a little more difficult.
It'll be difficult, yeah. But, but I appreciate what you've said to, you know, our constituents and the bus that we're going to work to try to make that happen where ultimately possible and be flexible and sensitive. we're ultimately possible and be flexible and sensitive as we all go through unprecedented times. So so thank you. That was really informative. Thank you to you and your team for all the work that you put in. Countless of it, I can't tell, you know, some people don't know, maybe they don't. I don't think they do. The number of times we've talked to you, Saturdays, Sundays, late evenings, okay, the number of Zoom calls that you and your team are on and that our administrative team members are on, the retreat, the hours of, you know, we retreat, okay? Put them up at the luxury library at the high school. Okay. So if anybody thinks we're using the term retreat, the administrative retreat, you know, we sent you to the poconos, right? You know, we work together as a team, nose to the grindstone to put this plan in place. And now we got to make it to the next step and execute it. Yeah, I feel better about it. I liked it before. I like it better now. And I think we're moving in the right direction. And look forward to hearing that last piece of detail coming out Thursday and encourage people to promptly ask questions if you have them. And we need to make decisions that we do this together.
I appreciate it. You know, shout out to our administrative team. They're working really hard. These guys are it's just, it's amazing how much they're trying to get done and work, you know, to get the reopening done for us. So I appreciate all the work they've done. And our staff too, you know, they've asked a lot of questions and they've all been great questions. There's no question that has been you know, from our staff and from our parents, that's been, you know, bad. It's all really good questions and we need to ask those questions and we need to try to answer them. That'll develop our plan even more so. It's a lot, right? Never did we think that we'd have to be doing this. Never in my years as an educator would think that we'd have to come close to something like this. But it's here and we're going to do it. So.
Great. All right. Anything else on our agenda for the evening?
That is it.
Okay. Do any announcements?
Sue, there were no announcements, correct? Just quickly, next meeting. So the next meeting we were supposed to do again live, but there's a conflict here at the Arcan Room. There's there's voting on September 1st. So they need this as a, I think it's a walk in.
Voting center.
Voting center. So our next meeting will be through Zoom. We don't have another location to go to. So it's not that we don't want to meet in person, just we can't. So we'll be, we'll we'll send that out next week for another Zoom meeting.
Somebody asked, will this be posted for replay? How quickly is the turnaround? Do you know?
Yeah. So I will, I've got two things recording here. So I have this meeting recorded on my computer that I'll send to Mrs. Robidoux and she sends over to Cable 8. We'll also send a copy to Mr. Garofano to put on our website. But I'm also recording it for Cable 8 and they'll replay it also. So we'll have it posted twice.
Okay. All right. With that, we'll entertain a motion that we adjourn for the evening.
The move.
Mr. Jake, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you, everybody, for attending. Thank you for your interest and your patience and your support. And we look forward to working with everyone to get through this together. Thank you.
Thank you.